Would everybody, where's Jackson? Jackson, are you doing the Pledge of Allegiance, my man? Jackson is now back-to-back doing the Pledge of Allegiance. I did want to give him a shout-out. He's also a member of the Laser Cats that was here a few weeks ago. And we have the honor to have Jackson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for City Council. If everybody could please rise.
On your cue, buddy.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, buddy. Good job, Jackson.
He's actually wearing a Burton Hallows t-shirt, not a Laser Cat t-shirt.
Listen, we can all be as one with Burton Hall Swim Club and Laser Cats. And right now, we do have some special recognitions. I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Jim Jolly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So tonight, we are honoring somebody who we are all very proud of here in the city of Livonia. Mackenzie Soroki is one of our residents and graduate of Stevenson High School, who has made Livonia proud and actually affected city business, whether she knows it or not, by participating in the Olympic Trials for Swimming recently. She finished seventh in the 100-meter breaststroke. And we want to give her a commendation here. I'll say first off, the commendation is very official, and I'll read it off. And it's got her notable accomplishments. Mackenzie swims for Burton Hollow, and my kids also swim for Burton Hollow. So from a distance, I've been able to witness Mackenzie over the last, I think, like, seven or eight years. And I'll tell you, I'm going to list off a bunch of accomplishments here that are all amazing. But most importantly, I can attest, as a dad and, you know, a Burton Hollow member, what's great about Mackenzie is Mackenzie is the greatest cheerleader for everybody on the team. Mackenzie's the first one to cheer for somebody else. Mackenzie runs around the swim meets with a PR cone. And she's the first person to celebrate everybody else's accomplishments. A lot of our swimmers at Burton Hollow and even other swim clubs in Livonia have had the benefit of her giving them private lessons and helping them become better swimmers. And I think that's what's most important, and that's probably what's going to carry her, actually even further than swimming, even though we expect very big things there as well. So Mackenzie, if you don't mind, I know I'm not going to ask you to say anything. Do you mind coming up to the podium, though, while I read this? And then we'll come up and take some pictures afterwards? Okay, so this is a commendation to Mackenzie Soroki from the Livonia City Council. It says, whereas Mackenzie Soroki started swimming at three years old, later competing in the Summer Swim League for Burton Hollow Swim Club. After she, um, excuse me, after learning to skate at six years old, she became a dual-sport athlete and became a committed hockey player at a Division One team with five national championships. Mackenzie Soroki, also a dedicated swimmer for the Livonia Stevenson High School, led to breaking the state high school girls' record for the 100-yard breaststroke and became a three-time Michigan State champion in the 100-breaststroke. And thereby accepted ultimately a scholarship to swim at the University of Tennessee, foregoing a full scholarship to play hockey at the University of Minnesota Duluth, as she was also a talented hockey player. Mackenzie made Livonia proud and was noticeable as a Livonian wearing a Burton Hollow swim cap as she participated in the Olympic Trials for Swimming, ultimately finishing seventh in the Olympic Trials for the 100-breaststroke. Therefore, the Livonia City Council does hereby take this opportunity to congratulate Mackenzie Soroki on finishing seventh at the Olympic Trials and wish her much success as she swims in the SEC and the University of Tennessee. And Mackenzie, you know, I think this is, it's pretty safe to say, anybody who watched the Trials, this is, you know, you've had a lot of accomplishments so far. You're absolutely not done. So we fully expect to have you back here at some point in the future. And, you know, I'll bet any one of you that at some point, there's going to be a sign as you enter Livonia saying, "Home of Mackenzie Soroki." So, um... So just one small note, your Trials were on the same night as one of our meetings. And we intentionally rushed through a meeting, don't tell any of the residents, so that some of us could get home to watch you swim. So I think it might have been the shortest city council meeting ever. I think we're going on like 14 or 15 minutes, so we could all drive home and watch you.
Please swim more, please.
Yeah. So anyways, congratulations, Mackenzie will give this to you. And we'd love to take a picture with you as well. Congratulations.
Nice job, Mackenzie. Good to see you. I jumped.
Not far either.
Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it.
All right, now from the fun meeting stuff, we can't really top that. So again, congratulations. One thing we, the council has been kind of joking about is, is I think we are in our 90s era. So you might see us, are we going to dress up as different things? Because right now, we're welcoming to the 1,997th regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Meetings of this minute will be approved at the next regular meeting, scheduled to be held on Wednesday, August 7, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. We show all members of council present. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes from the regular meeting of City Council held on July 1, 2024. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Vice President?
So moved.
Second.
Tashnik and Jolly? Do we have any comments from the audience on the minutes of the regular meeting from July 1?
Mr. Chair?
Do you have questions, ma'am? No, okay. Councilwoman Toy?
I don't see council comments on this, if I may. Just make a quick comment. I want to recognize a very important senior adult that's in our audience tonight, and that's Sue Williams. Sue has just done miraculous things for the city of Livonia. And her daughter was one of the people that used to help my mother when she had her issues at our home when she was so sick. So I got to meet the family, and they are a wonderful family. And you taught your daughter well, and we thank you so much at your age, because you like to point that out.
92.
For being...
We got to have applause. We're going to be doing this all night.
Part of our senior community in giving us your input about our new wellness center and other things that seniors need in our community. Thank you.
I just think it's beautiful. I'm so impressed with what they're doing. And what's really going to be nice about it is it's going to be easier to get into. Because sometimes, when the weather is bad, it's hard to, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Thank you for everything you do for seniors. I'm just so blessed to have you support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. So we did have motion and support, correct? No comments from the audience regarding that. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the minutes?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Hi, the minutes carry. I'm going to now move on to audience communication. The council has set aside 30 minutes for communication that is not on the agenda. If anybody would like to speak on the audience communication, please make your way to the podium. Name an address, and you have three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, council. I'm from the Lansing office for State Senator Mary Kavanaugh. Just wanted to notify everyone of her upcoming Coffee Hour happening in Livonia. It's on Friday, July 19, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. At Anastasia and Katie's Coffee Shop, which is at 19215 Merriman Road in Livonia. And we'll have lots of great resources there. Senator will give some legislative updates. If you have any questions or things we can help you with, that's a great opportunity to come and say hello. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Susan Chewie. I live at 32700 Hees. And I would really like to request help from the City Council with a rat infestation problem I'm having in my immediate neighborhood. There is an underground, there is an in-ground swimming pool that has been sunken in and empty for years at 32637 Indiana. This is behind me and to the left. Last July, we had to hire pest masters due to the rats in our yard. They identified this swimming pool and yard as the source of the rats. I have called Michael Johnson, Code Enforcement Officer, three times in the last year. And since he has done nothing about the situation, I sent a message to his supervisor, Steve Banco, recently with pictures of the rat run that is coming from under the trampoline, kids' trampoline behind us at 32625 Indiana. They are right next door to the house with the sunken pool. The rats are burrowed into the mulch under the trampoline that the children play on. His supervisor, Steve Banco, did not respond to me. We have spent $1,500 in the last year on extermination fees. My husband and my next-door neighbor continue to shoot rats with pellet guns and catch them in traps in our yards. This is a rental home, and the new renters also have a small child. If anything that, anything happens to him with this sunken-in pool collapsed, covered with a tarp and a few cinder blocks, the city is liable. I know of someone in Westland with a similar situation. They were cited by their city and forced to fill in this pool. We would appreciate your assistance in this matter, as the code department has been completely unresponsive and ineffective. I did not know where else to go. I could also barter with the north side of Livonia, and perhaps we could trade maybe 20 of our rats for one of the deer they were complaining about. I'd be glad to do that. So if there's anything, anything, anything you can do to help us, I beg of you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good evening, sir.
My name is Harold Hoskins. I've lived in Livonia 48 years. I had a sewage back-up. On May 15, I filed a claim with the city. The 16th, I filed a claim. That's when it came in. I filed the claim about a week and a half later. I've done everything, all the paperwork was filed. Everything was filed properly. I've dealt with Jim Duffy. He called me July 1. He said, "It's been approved by the city." I called him this morning. He said, "I did not tell you that. I was going to come to the meeting July 1." He said, "I did not tell you that." He said, "I don't tell anyone that." I said, "You told me that," you know, or I would have came to the meeting. You know, my basement is a mess. I had a full, a finished basement. I've ripped everything out. I'm getting ready to redo it. You know, I can't get anywhere with this guy. I don't know if there's anyone here can help me. I don't know who's in charge. I don't know.
But... Sir, is there a card right there on the podium?
Is there a what?
Is there like a business card that's somewhere up there? It's a contact? What I'd like you to do, it's going to get you right to our council office?
Yes.
If you can give that a call tomorrow, you'll reach out to Sarah. We'll get some information. We'll try to get you the answer as fast as we can.
Okay. I appreciate it.
And I appreciate you hanging out with us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hello, good evening, council. Kathleen McIntyre, 14455 Fairway, Livonia, Michigan. Just wanted to pass along some sad news. Dr. Dale Coller, who was a longtime principal of Stevenson High School, passed away Saturday morning after a relatively short illness. He was just a remarkable man. I was fortunate to be at Stevenson. When he was there, it was a different time. It was a time when administrators had the backing of parents. And he did a phenomenal job with the school. And parents and most students and faculty really thought a lot. And he made sure that Stevenson was an exceptional high school. He was involved in the community in a lot of different ways for 50 years, including with the Rotary Club, and just stayed engaged, always with his finger on the pulse. His wife, he's survived by his wife Betty, who's a longtime active member with the Livonia Symphony Orchestra. And I just wanted to extend condolences to him and to his family. And he certainly embodied, longtime member of Rotary, as you know, he certainly embodied the motto of service before self. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to council communication. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Vice President?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Livonia Public Schools on their grand opening of the beautiful Early Childhood Center. Mrs. Buzinski and I just came from there. It's an amazing facility. It's on Newburgh, the site of the old Dickinson Center. Amazing facility for our youngest residents. I think it's going to do nothing but promote, not only LPS, but the city as well as we welcome these babes into this facility. It is certainly an amazing, amazing building. I also wanted to give a shout-out to the LPS Educational Foundation for putting on a great golf outing this past weekend. President McCullough and I both played in it. President McCullough, I think, won every possible raffle prize that was available.
Yeah, it was a good day.
Just a couple. I also know that Mr. Jolly sponsored hole one, and I sponsored hole 18. So they started and ended with council that day, so that was kind of fun. And it was really a fun day. President McCullough also sponsored the drink cozies. I now have three. I need a fourth to make a full set. Okay, thanks. But it helps keep my golf glove dry, so I appreciate that. But anyway, a great day. So shout-out to LPS for their, like I said, their childhood center and to the Educational Foundation for their great event. Thank you.
Councilwoman Buzinski?
Yes. I concur. The new Early Childhood Education Center is beautiful. It was great that they opened it up for the community so that we got to see what our investment has been. I know Councilwoman Morgan was there as well, although we kind of crossed paths at the end. Other news, I have my monthly Coffee Hour this coming Saturday, July 20. It's at 1:00 p.m. this time. Normally, it's in the morning. It's at 1:00 p.m. at the Civic Center Library. Council President McCullough will be joining me. He'll be talking about the city budget specifically. But as always, I'll do a broad council update and answer any questions folks have. Everyone is welcome, including kids. And feel free, or I have like refreshments that I offer as well. And in addition, I'd also like to introduce the subject matter of Building Maintenance and Facilities Management to the Capital Outlay and Infrastructure Committee.
Support. Support?
Okay. So I've said this many times, and I'll continue to say it as long as necessary. Our Department of Public Works is facing some fundamental challenges. And we can't ignore them. I'm not an expert, and I'm not involved in the day-to-day operations of DPW. But as a resident and now as a council member, I know that our buildings have not been maintained. And the consequences range from building closures to our firefighters living in subpar conditions to us spending a quarter of a million dollars to pump air into the library because the HVAC system collapsed beyond repair, to moving forward with a bond proposal for a new city hall, because this building also doesn't meet, you know, the needs. Sometimes it's hot, sometimes it's cold. Sometimes, you know, we've made a little bit of progress. And those are the big things. You know, I think we also see smaller needs, weeds in garden beds, playgrounds that need, you know, fresh mulch, and services being outsourced due to staffing insufficiencies. I am not blaming anyone, and I'm especially not blaming our hard workers at DPW for these problems. But having these problems is not good for anyone. And I want those of us in leadership positions to acknowledge that there's a problem and look to figure out a solution. At minimum, I want the city to have a facilities maintenance plan. Homeowners, condo and pool club associations, plan for wear, tear, and replacement needs for short and long term. I want the city to take responsibility for the assets in our care from our tax-paying residents and think about the future. And I think committee meetings are a good place to start. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Councilman Donavick?
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll be in support of this motion. I think it makes sense, and the way I look at it is, it's informative, right? We get an opportunity to hear from administration, who's been doing a lot of work, and they're pushing some really great initiatives forward. So we kind of get an idea of the building maintenance and facility maintenance plans moving forward. I know Council President McCullough has a lot of experience in that field and his full-time job. I know multiple council members are very passionate about the future of our buildings. So I think it's a good idea that, let's have the discussion, give our DPW and administration an opportunity, kind of educate council better on what currently the practices are, and then what we, as a city, can do in the future. So I think it's a good idea, and looking forward to getting that meeting scheduled. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else from council? Anything from the audience? Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote to put the subject matter into...
And I forgot to mention that, Capital Outlay and Infrastructure. Thank you.
Capital Outlay and Infrastructure.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye. And the item carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Toy?
Thank you. I'm glad that several of my colleagues got over to the Early Childhood, the new center there. I just want to take a glimpse of that in regards to folks that can qualify. There's wonderful state funding that have come our way and in Wayne County's way for infants to four-years-old. I know a couple families benefiting by this. And it'll give these young children a great head start. So hats off to Livonia Public Schools for really focusing in. I know when I was up in Lansing, Governor Granholm had really focused on early childhood and really wanted to jumpstart some things in regards to that. It's just called dollars and cents, as it is in any government entity. It's great to have a wish list, but if you don't have the dollars, and you can't keep going back to the taxpayer all the time, at least I can't. So we were able to get some great funding for that. So hats off to the state. And I know that Senator Kavanaugh's representative was here and to take back that message to the good senator and our state reps, which we're very fortunate to have them working hard in Lansing for these kinds of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, I want to touch on something that I'm assuming most of us saw. Unfortunately, the weekend, there was the attempted assassination of the United States President. And this isn't meant to be political whatsoever. It's more as an American, as a millennial, it was kind of surreal to see that situation unfold. Growing up at LPS, we talked about the attempted assassination on Presidents Reagan back in the 80s, and Ford from Michigan, and JFK, and Abraham Lincoln, and a few others. So to be an adult and to see that situation unfold, it was surreal. And, you know, I want to give my condolences. I spoke to a number of my colleagues here that wanted to give their condolences to the Campitore family, which is a retired fire chief who was a hero. And we in Livonia are so fortunate to have amazing first responders. And I was reading a story that his daughter was talking about how the fire chief that unfortunately passed away at the political rally dove on top of his family when those shots rang out and literally was a hero and protected his family. So just as Americans, I wanted to touch on it, regardless of our political affiliation. I don't care what you believe in policy-wise. At the end of the day, we're all Americans. And running for office, whether it be local, state, federal, doesn't matter, you do it because you care for your community. And we all come to meetings, like tonight, because we care for our community. So I just hope that we, as a country, can come together on some of these political issues and disagree. I disagree with all my colleagues all the time. Just ask them. And, you know, but I care about them. I sincerely care about our mayor. I care about our city workers. I care about my colleagues up here and their families. And I want all of us to be happy and be healthy. So just to see that I felt, since I'm in this position, I felt compelled to just briefly talk about it and say that, you know, my thoughts and prayers go out to that family and to our president, our current president, past presidents, and anybody that steps up for those roles. So just thinking about them, and hopefully, as Americans, we can all come together and think about it as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavick. Anything else from council? I'm going to pass the gavel, because one time, once in a while, I like to talk. Couple items that I do have, just as announcements. As many probably seen on Facebook, we had our city treasurer, Susan Nash, celebrated a birthday over the weekend on the 14th. So Susie, if you're out there, wishing you a huge happy birthday. Hope it was a great one. We are showing a public hearing on July 22. And then the one thing I wanted to, and I hope I can get a motion for my colleagues. So on the agenda today, I'm going to make a motion to talk about, start the conversation on a responsible contractor ordinance. Looking for support?
Support. Motion by McCullough, support from Buzinski.
Oh, yes, thank you. May I have the floor back?
You may have the floor back.
All right. So we've got, if anybody, obviously, we've been, the administration's been working hard. We've been working hard. Everybody's kind of been working hard with a lot of things that are coming up with the city. You've heard about Vision 21. You've heard about the downtown. We just did a ribbon-cutting on the senior center, and that's going to be breaking ground any time now. We've got some big projects that are coming up. One of the items we're going to be discussing is on the agenda today. And so with these big dollar amount projects, it's something that I, that's fairly new in the last decade. It's more of a procurement policy to ensure that certain thresholds, that there would be almost a qualified bidding service. There would be requirements on big, large projects for the city. Some range from anything over $50,000. Royal Oaks got one for over $100,000. Some are even a quarter million dollars. And it just adds an extra layer, you know, as governments sometimes does. But when you deal with the market these days and fly-by-night contractors, and some good, some bad, this helps us and adds an extra layer of due diligence, should we say, on the part of the city. And it's something that, I don't have all the answers, but again, we have a great council here. And just to start a discussion, to see if this is something we'd be interested in with all the potential projects coming up, is all I'm looking for. So that's behind it. And, you know, not that I want to add meetings, but these are big things, and we're leaders in the city, and this is a big time for us. So that's my logic behind it.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from council regarding this motion? The audience? Are you looking to put this into committee?
Yes, committee of the whole possible?
Committee of the whole, okay. So we have a motion to put this into committee of the whole. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
It's still yours.
Would you like to?
It's your call. You want to get it back?
You can have it back. I will relinquish the gavel back to President McCullough.
All right. So we're now going to move on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. We do show an audit report that comes to us from the Livonia Housing Commission. It's more of a place-and-file, receive-and-file. This is dated December 31, 2023, in reference to the Community Development Block Grant Program and single-family slash city-owned properties. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Let me see here. Let me see here. Moving on the consent agenda, items one through seven on the consent agenda will be voted on as one item. These were previously discussed at the study meeting that took place on July 1st and determined to be non-controversial. Counsel, do I have a motion?
So move.
I have motion by Toy, support by Morgan. Do we have any further comments from the council? Seeing none, anything from the audience? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Bozinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
Aye, and the consent agenda passes seven to zero.
We're going to now move on to the unfinished business. And item number eight is a report out from the Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee that took place on July 8th, 2024. The subject matter of the 2022 Facility Condition Assessment and Space Needs Assessment. I just wanted to touch base. This has grown, and Mr. Donavich and Ms. Toy have kind of been part of this committee. Lots of work every time we do this. I'm going to give kudos out where they're due, and then I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Donavich to give us an overview on what we learned and what we discussed.
Thank you, Mr. President. You are the best. Good evening. I have the pleasure of chairing this committee, and I am going to be doing the meeting minute readouts. Bear with me. There's a lot of information here. I want to say this is maybe the seventh meeting. I'd like to thank the mayor's administration for really making council a large part of this project, and it's been a really great project that I've had the pleasure of serving with my colleagues on, having a lot of great info and inputs. The Capitol Outlay and Infrastructure Committee meeting was held Monday, July 8th on the second floor. This is a public meeting. Myself as a chair, our vice chair, Mr. Jim Jolly, and our member, Councilwoman Bozinski. Other members present was Mr. McCullough and Mrs. Tashnik. The mayor, chief of staff, city attorney, finance director, our planning and economic development director, our government affairs director were in attendance, a number of representatives from Plant Moran Real Point, a real estate consultant firm. And then two representatives from Livonia Public Schools, Mr. Philip Francis and also trustee Colleen Byrne. So sincere thanks to members from LPS for taking time out of their day to come help out council. The meeting convened at 7:00 PM. Mayor Brosnan started the meeting off on recapping previous meetings we've had on this item for the town center project, stating the initial discussions that started back in roughly 2017 on the redevelopment of this corner with the master plan process. The administration is asking the city council to begin the process of issuing bonds to construct a new city hall. Our finance director, Deborah Lichtenberg, gave council a presentation on various legal requirements for municipal bonds and the administration's preliminary financial figures in consultation with our bond legal firm, Miller Canfield, our financial advisor, PFM Advisors, and our real estate consultant thus far, who has conducted the space needs assessment Plant Moran Real Point. The first legal step in issuing bonds is the notice of intent. The notice of intent allows 45 days for public input, a petition to be filed and placed on a local ballot for a vote. If no petition is filed within 45 days, bonds may be issued by action of the city council. And just to touch on briefly the petition process, if members of the community wanted to file a petition, they would go about that. The traditional ballot proposal process, there's some more intricacies there, but you could go to our city clerk's office, and our very dedicated clerk, Clerk Miller, could help you with that process. But there are the traditional bond process, or excuse me, the traditional petition process in issuing any kind of ballot initiatives. The city must define the capital project, estimated costs, timelines, and various financial figures, like the maximum amount being asked, the maximum term, rates, and reimbursement of costs. The notice of intent is asking for a maximum of $45 million, a rate to be determined by the market at the time of issuing of bonds, and a maximum term of 30 years. If the notice of intent is approved by the city council, the public 45-day period has been satisfied, the city will then start the planning process of design work, the site plan, and other necessary due diligence to create the total budget. The figure will ultimately be the dollar amount the city council will then have the process to approve for the official bond. The notice of intent, which is being discussed at this point, is only to give the public a right of referendum. Bonds will not be issued tonight at this meeting until the actual final terms of the bond sale are separately approved by the city council in a bond authorizing resolution. The administration anticipates this occurring sometime mid to late 2025 upon completion of the design work and final costs. So this evening's actions are not actually approving a bond process, but the first initial kind of procedural process tonight. The administration has proposed that the city pay for the debt servicing of the bond with the roughly $2.4 million a year the city is saving in retiree healthcare premium payments since the city council switched to Medicare Advantage healthcare. The administration estimates the cost of constructing the new city hall will range from $31 million and a half to $42 million. Over the next 10 years, the existing city hall will cost an estimated $36 million in capital improvements and holding costs. Myself, the committee chair, and our president, President McCullough, continue to express costs of the cost estimates, thinking that they are too high, and for the administration, continue to work on lowering those construction estimates. After talking to a number of our council colleagues here, I know a number of us have continued to think that that number is too high. However, a number of us also believe that we should give PMR and the administration the opportunity to draft those site plans and design work and that budget to come back before council sometime next year. The best way to conduct the needed due diligence is to start this legal bond process, which is the notice of intent. The vice chairman of the committee, Councilman Jim Jolly, did offer an approving resolution for the notice of intent to bond for the above. The PowerPoint presentation was included in the packet and will be made available to members of the public. So if you'd like more information on this bond packet and the information that's been presented to city council that is available to all members of the community. Andy Fountain, Paul, and Doug Smith from Plant Moran Real Point, which is referred to as PMR, gave a really great presentation on what PMR's role in the redevelopment of the town center project would be, giving us a great background on their company's history and some of the other projects they've worked on. PMR has roughly 130 employees specializing in all things real estate development, legal, planning, engineering, and other applicable services. They would provide pre-ballot proposal services, development advisory services, and other owner representative services to the city of Livonia. They would provide day-to-day operational lead on the entire scope of the project and work with the city and other strategic staff to completion. Our city attorney, Mr. Carter Fisher, has engaged in negotiations with a contract with PMR. Ultimately, the administration is asking that the city council approve the acceptance of contract with PMR, Plant Moran Real Point. Plant Moran Real Point has been the real estate consultant thus far for multiple phases of the town center project, so they already have a lot of background, knowledge, and experience, and more specifically is the 2022 Facility Condition Assessment and Space Needs. If the contract with PMR is approved, they will start the process of developing that design work and those final cost estimates for city hall and the town center project respectively. This project is initially estimated to be roughly 96 months, but that number is expected to go down as we go through the process. The city attorney answered numerous questions from the city council about specific contractual language and the financial projections in the city's best interest. PMR has worked with numerous communities on various municipal projects, most notably our partners across the street, Livonia Public Schools, on a $500 million bond program and their sinking fund. Mr. Philip Francis, the assistant superintendent of district services to LPS, and the school board trustee, Colleen Burton, were in attendance and gave remarks on their experiences with PMR and the various recent projects that they've completed with PMR. Mr. Francis, again, who is their assistant superintendent of district services, explained the critical daily operational relationship his team has with PMR and how successful their teamwork has been. Trustee Burton shared her insight as a board member's perspective, and the money spent with PMR would be fiscally wise decision as the school district benefited from their experience and all the work that they provided to their client. Council Vice President Martha Tashnik offered an approving resolution to award the contract to Plant Moran Real Point for those above services. And lastly, Mayor Brosnan has asked that we continue this process with future committee meetings to keep city council up to date. Again, all meetings are open to the public, and the information is available on the city's website. And again, I'd like to thank my colleagues in city council who all have worked very hard on this project. The department heads have worked very hard on this project, various members of the city staff and residents and our administration. It's been a big project, a lot of meetings, hours and hours of discussion. I tried to be as succinct as possible in these comments, but, I mean, I could probably go on for another three hours talking about everything we've spoken about, and it was a good committee meeting, and that meeting adjourned at 8:40 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich, and very thorough explanation. I even wrote down some notes just for touching points, but I think you pretty much touched everything that got us to this point. So well done.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, I'm going to ask that, because there's two resolutions, and we'll start with Resolution A, which is the notice of intent. Do I have a motion? Councilman Jolly?
I'll move to approve the notice of intent.
We got a motion by Jolly, support by Toy. These are the approving notices for the bond intent. Counsel, I'm going to go to council first, and then I see our mayor's here, so she could touch base on some items. Counsel, any other questions, Vice President?
Mr. President, I've received some concerns from residents regarding this issue, and I just want to make it clear that if we are approving the notice of intent, this does not mean we are approving the bond request for 45 million. And I know Mr. Donavich stated that, but I just want to make sure that that's clear. Before we can move forward with this process, this is a legal requirement to get the ball rolling tonight, and it does give the public a right of referendum. I would consider this akin to getting a pre-approval for a mortgage before you go shopping for a home, where you have to know how much you have or how much you're going to be able to spend. So we're not going to be looking at a bond resolution until 2025, but this is just to get the process rolling.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Councilwoman Bozinski?
Yes, just wanted to reaffirm what was just said in terms of this isn't a motion to approve a new bond. It's just another step forward in that direction. And in these meetings, I have really maintained my personal, you know, concerns and priorities that before we look at investing in a new building, that we have a plan to care for the new investment and also the current buildings that we have. And I have stated in our meetings, as my colleagues know, that that is a requirement for me to vote for a issuance of a bond. This is a notice of intent that informs residents of the terms of the bond that we can pursue down the road, and I'll support the movement forward with the hope and expectation that council and the administration will start to look at our facility needs and begin the process of developing a long-term solution to problems related to building maintenance. It's very important to me, and I think it's important to our residents, too.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, council, and because I know that you're at the top of this agenda item and you've got a number of resolutions to take up, I wanted just a second to speak in broad terms to where I hope we're all headed tonight. First of all, to let you know that in addition to my remarks, if you have any questions, we do have a representative from Miller Canfield here, Tom Colas, tonight, as well as representatives from Plant Moran Real Point that are prepared to answer any last-minute questions that you may have. But first of all, I want to thank you all for taking the time that you've taken on this issue. As Councilman Donavich alluded to, there have been close to seven different meetings on this agenda item tonight. And the synopsis that you provided, Councilman, was extremely good, extremely efficient, but doesn't reflect the magnitude of work that you all embraced and worked hard to understand over the course of the past four months. So I want to thank you for taking that deep dive with us this eve, prior to this evening. Tonight is a critical step in the advancement of Livonia Vision 21, and I think you all ought to stand in a moment of pride, understanding that we are now on the precipice of taking that step. So I wanted to spend just a minute thanking each of you for the unique element that you've brought to get us to this point. As you indicated, this all started back in 2017 when members of our community came together and said, you know what, we want the city to head in this direction. We want the city to begin to focus on creating a town center for us. And each one of you has thoroughly taken on that responsibility as part of your elected role here in office. Councilman Morgan, I want to in particular thank you for your understanding of the need for speed. I think it was about a year ago you and I had a conversation, and I was describing the importance of finding a way to get to us, to get to this point tonight. And in utter exasperation, I still remember you saying, this is ridiculous. We need to get moving now. And you were right. You're also one of the council people that has remained very focused on the cost of doing nothing. And because you have continued to ask that question, we've asked that question of ourselves. What is the cost of continuing to do nothing? The cost of continuing to maintain this building and others on this campus that have gone past their useful life? And we now understand the cost is close to $1 million a year if we continue to do nothing. So I want to thank you for bringing that to the forefront. You, along with Walt Disney, believe that the way to get started is to quit talking and to begin doing, and tonight we begin doing. Council President McCullough and Councilwoman Bozinski, I want to thank you for your focus on to develop a structure to better manage our improved assets in the future, and not just managing the assets that we're planning on in the future, but finding a way to manage those which we have today. We as an administration understand the deep need to do that, know that we want to work alongside of you to make that happen, but also understand that by bringing Plant Moran on, that is really taking the first comprehensive step necessary to understanding the true magnitude of what that facilities maintenance program needs to look like. So I applaud you for your willingness to participate in the process to this point, but also for your watchfulness. I think it's going to be important as we move forward. Council Vice President Tashnik, your understanding that nothing was going to happen unless we were able to secure additional property from Livonia Public Schools in order to move our senior center and attach it to the recreation center was spot on. And you jumped in to make sure that that happened and to help us to make sure that that happened, that there was an understanding among your colleagues and among our friends across the street that we all needed to work together to find a path to that. I want to thank you for that guidance and for that leadership. I also want to thank you for the information that you brought forward last week when we were talking about the role of Plant Moran Real Point and the way that they've interacted with Livonia Public Schools and the project that you all just spoke to earlier. The Early Childhood Education Center is just one of the projects that Plant Moran has been working on with Livonia Public Schools. But you brought to our attention the fact that you really had been some of the boots on the ground in helping Plant Moran Real Point understand some of the needs that Livonia Public School was going to have. And it was that understanding that I think helps us to get this point, to this point, with a great deal of assurity that we, in fact, have chosen the right partner to work with in this endeavor. Councilwoman Toy, I want to thank you for staying up to speed on the details of this project during a difficult health period for yourself. You were always available by phone. You let me go on ad nauseam about what was happening and all of the plans and all of the details, and you stayed very much on top of this. You insisted from the beginning that a bond of this magnitude was going to be necessary and essential in our continued effort, that in order to secure the funding, you really didn't want to build a new city hall using a millage. Bonding was the way to go in your opinion from the very beginning, and it was that insistence that compelled us to find a way through to this path. So I want to thank you for that. And finally, to Councilman Donavich, as chairman of the Capitol Outlay Committee, your leadership and hosting the in-depth committee meetings has been simply fantastic. You know, your charge originally was to take a look at that 2022 Facility Condition and Space Needs Assessment conducted by Plant Moran Real Point. It would have been easy to have gone over it, glossed over it, rubber stamped it, received and filed it, and moved on, but you took us to a point of action. You took us to the point where we are today, taking a look at what we need to do next and putting the proper steps in place that are really going to guarantee that our children have a place that they want to come home to. That's the goal. That's the goal that we're all trying to work to achieve in advancing Livonia Vision 21. So this administration stands poised and ready with all of you to make that happen. The steps that you're about to take tonight, while not final steps, are clearly the next steps, and without them, we won't get to the final step. So tonight is a big night for the city council. Tonight is a big night for the city, and I want to thank you for your partnership in working with us to get us to this point, and I am really excited about where we go from here. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, before we go to the audience, did anybody have anything else? Councilman Toy?
You know, over the years, we've had Livonia vision of tomorrow, or tomorrow for Livonia, or what in the heck it was. Ed McNamara had a whole book, which sat on a shelf, unfortunately, because dollars and cents weren't available. And I got to commend you, Mayor Brosnan. You brought a lot of this together, and you were part of those councils where Kritzman and others talked about, and we even went to Ohio on our own dimes to go down there and look at their competitive niches they described and the buildings and what made that tick so well. But you also are a champion, a major champion of this, that brought this all together. So hats off to you as well. So thank you for your leadership on this and your team. Thank you very much.
Councilman Jolly?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Mayor, this is, this is an effort that you have spearheaded. You know, I don't think you were on council when we started Vision 21. You had a more important job at the time of being the chair of the Vision 21 Committee. And that Vision 21 Committee replaced the previous master plan we had in the city that was written in 1985 and only reads nothing short of a bad Simpsons episode because they called for a monorail to be built down Farnington Road. So there are some plans that are worth shelving forever. So, there are some plans that are worth shelving forever, and there are other plans worth acting on, and this plan is absolutely one worth acting on. I'm proud tonight that we're going to start engaging in the actual concrete steps of voting towards implementing that plan. And it's been a great effort on behalf of the city and your office, your directors, my colleagues on the city council, everybody who participated in the process, the outside vendors as well who've helped us in this. And this is actually exciting at this point, because it's not going to be a plan on a shelf anymore. It's operational at this point. So, congratulations to you and everybody else, and I'm happy to lend my support. And this is nothing short of rebuilding our city for the next 50 years, because Livonia was built out in the '60s and the '70s, and these buildings and the infrastructure are showing their life. They were not planned probably to last as long as they have, but we will be setting up the future, probably for the rest of my life and a lot of lives that are in Livonia right now. But taking it over into the future like that and setting up a strong foundation is extremely important, and it's a good step. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman Jolly. And just to be clear, actually, Pete Ventura chaired the Livonia Vision 21 Committee. He serves on our planning commission and has been involved with this process for a really long time. But I was honored to have had a chance to have served right alongside of him and to work to develop the plan that we're all working forward to advancing tonight. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier, I was kind of reading out all the notes and very focused on that, because I'm just trying to get all the information out to the residents so that it's on the record and that residents are informed. Everybody on this council and the administration wants to make sure that residents are informed in this process, because it is a big deal. And it's a transformational project. It's a generational project. It's something that we're going to look at 100 years from now, and this corner has the potential to look drastically different. And I can't say it enough, this is the first legal step that we, as a city, are taking. There's going to be a lot of opinions and ideas and visions for what this corner will look like, and I think it's important that by taking this first step, we are able to work through that process as a city, as department heads, as members of the community, and try to see what that is going to cost us ultimately. We've got an idea, and we have an idea of what we want to build here, but now this is that legal step, that first step to accomplish that. So, I'm looking forward to getting past this and getting to work, and hopefully, Plant Moran can help us in that process and then ultimately come back before council sometime next year, and we can discuss it further and talk about how great it is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else from council? I'm going to go to the audience now. If the audience has any communication for Resolution A, which is the notice of intent on the bonds, make your way up to the podium, name and address.
Steve King, 33950 Coventry. I was at the committee of the whole meeting, and I think I was the only citizen there. I think if you held those meetings in this location, you'd get more audience participation, and people would be more informed. Tons of documents about this on the city website. The one thing Rob didn't mention in none of the documents, I believe PMR is, their fee's about, what, $6 million? I mean, is that what we're doing tonight?
This is just on the notice of intent.
Okay, just on the notice of intent. The other thing, I mean, can I mention the $45 million city hall? Can I mention that? I think the citizens, we've talked about town center, Town Square, whatever, for 20-plus years, and it's great, and I'm all in favor of it. But I think you'd have more citizen support if you revisited a $45 million city hall. The run sign's getting ready to, they're going to tear down the run sign, because they can't fill the office space. The nature of work has changed. It's all hybrid now. We don't need a $45 million city hall. I'm sure we could do with a $20 million city hall. So, I'm hoping, moving forward, you're going to really, really look at that, because 45 million seems like an awful lot for a city hall. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. King. Councilwoman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, and thanks to the resident for bringing that up. And again, in my meeting notes, I tried to put out just what the facts or what the information is, and I'm happy that you brought that up. And I also included in the notes that myself and Council McCullough and some of my other colleagues have also voiced concerns about the ultimate price of what the city hall would cost. I think $45 million is too expensive for a sophisticated office building. However, I want to give our representatives and administration opportunity to bring us the final budget. Unfortunately, right now, because of the legal ramifications, we have to come up with a number, and we have to ask for the most amount now. But we're not actually asking for that amount today. That is what we're legally asking for, and then giving our professionals, our vendors, an opportunity to draft those plans and ultimately bringing us a dollar figure that we, as a council, have an opportunity to discuss at great length and figure out what that budget looks like. But I think it is incumbent upon council to really set the tone that we're going to be looking after the dollars and cents of this project very, very closely, because we do have to sell this project to our community, and ultimately, we're the ones that make the decision up here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Perkins. I am a business representative with the Michigan Regional Council of Carpenters and Mill Rights, and I represent 5,000 carpenters, mill rights, and floor layers here in southeast Michigan, 200 of which live right here in the city of Livonia. And I have a few, a couple in the audience with me tonight. I just wanted to come up here and let you all know that we are in full support of Livonia Vision's 2021, 2020 development project. I said that this project, this development, will not only bring economic benefits to the said residents, but for the men and women actually working on the project, right? When you think about the floor layers, carpenters, and mill rights that have built the buildings that you all work in, play in, eat in, that's how we provide for our families. And to touch on what Councilman Dominic mentioned about this being a transformational development, you are correct. Transformational developments provide transformational opportunities, and the only way those opportunities are handed down to the ones that are working on those projects and the ones that reside in the city is by approving said development. So, we just want to come, we want to come before you tonight to let you know that we're in full support of this development, and we hope you are, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, oh.
Thank you. Kathleen McIntyre, Fairway Street, Livonia, Michigan. This is a huge undertaking. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I was on the master plan committee of Vision 2021, and the planning was a lot of work. That was the easy part compared to the implementation. I've reviewed all of this in detail. You know, I have a finance background and remain very interested in what goes on in the city expenditure or taxpayer money. I'm assuming that the $45,000, $45 million, and we're not here to approve that tonight, is a high ceiling, because I'm doubtful that the city could afford a bond issuance of that amount. Also, the savings from moving to Medicare Advantage, there are some emerging problems with Medicare Advantage. There are choices being taken away from participants and some limitations on plans and fewer participants. So, I would just like to ask you to ask the administration to look at the viability of keeping everyone on Medicare Advantage, since that's where we claim that most of the money's coming from. And finally, when I went through this and I looked at all the details for the existing buildings, and I know this bond issue just covers the civic campus, but there is a $363,365 amount in there, because it does talk about other buildings for Noble Library. Is that, I'd like to ask if that's the cost to demolish Noble? Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name's Scott Randall, 9456 Bassett, lifelong resident of Livonia. Signed up for the Marine Corps right across the street. I've lived here my whole life. I played in this parking lot. Still upset you closed Bentley. I was a freshman in '86. You closed in '85. I wanted to be a Bulldog my whole life, and then you bussed me all the way out to Churchill, and I grew up right in London and Merriman, basically. But what I would like to say is, I've lived here. I've been able to raise a family. I have a 30-year-old son. I have two, four and five-year-old granddaughters. The MRCC has been good to me. My signature is all up and down the Schoolcraft College Campus. I work in the New Vista, the Applied Science Building, the IHA's Surgery Center. Obviously, I work for George Auk. Our name's all over the place there. So, anyways, I'd just like to say that I would like to see maybe some of the numbers come down as well, as far as being a resident, but I would like to say that of the, one of the 200 people that do live in this city, I am proud that we're moving forward and that this is finally, we do keep tabs on this in some of our different meetings, as I'm a delegate and the recording secretary for Local 1234. So, this does come up from time to time, different projects that are going on with millages in the cities and bonds or whatnot, projects. I'm proud that it's going on, but like I said, I would like to see maybe just, you know, curb the numbers slightly if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Barbara Khrushka, 34775 Pembroke. This has nothing to do with this, but the lady with the rats.
We do have audience communication, general audience communication for items that are not on the agenda.
Well, it was the lady spoke about the rats. How does she go about?
We can, we'll touch base with it on, right now, we're only speaking on the item for this. We have a couple more items to go, and I'm going to open it up to the audience again. We'll get right back to you.
I just want to say a couple things. Sue Williams, I live across the street, and Eliza Howell, the garden's over there. The seniors have all talked about this, and we all know we're not going to see it, because we're not going to be here, but we're really happy that our children, grandchildren, and those are going to be able to take part in this. And you know, when you drive through here, I visualize it in my brain, like, I know what this is going to look like, and I'm so happy that you're doing this. Good work.
Thank you.
You're going to be here. Don't worry.
Yes. I want to, I want to know what it looks like, too.
I think Ms. Williams is going to help us.
We're going to name, we're going to name a building after you, okay?
Do we have any more audience communication on this item, which is Resolution A? Seeing none, before, now I go to the clerk. This is, as the mayor said, as council colleague said, as the audience said, even former council president McIntyre, who's in the audience, she was a huge part of this, getting it to this point. So, kudos to that, to her, and I know anybody else that was on council that was a part of it. This vote hopefully is for you as well. Did you want to say anything? Oh, Madam Clerk, will you please take this incredible, awesome vote?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And we have a 7-0 with a notice of intent to start pushing some stuff past the goal line. There we go. Congratulations. We're going to move on to Resolution B, which is approving of Plant Moran, Real Point, the PMR proposal. Counsel, Vice President.
Thank you. I wanted to offer the motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion from Vice President, support from Mr. Jolly. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I offered the resolution to award the contract to Plant Moran, Real Point, because I think it would honestly be foolish and fiscally irresponsible to try and take on a project of this magnitude ourselves. We just don't have the bandwidth here in the city to do that, and we need these experts. I have talked at length with the LPS School Board Trustees, who use PMR for their enormous bond projects. They did 23 buildings, if you can imagine, and I feel that they will ensure that we do the project right and ultimately save us time and money in the process. And I know it seems like a large contract to pay them, but I think that's going to come back to us easily. I lived through the improvements and the construction at LPS, my day job, working with PMR. I was on a lot of the committees over there, working with them, and it, you know, it went about as smoothly as a project of that size could. You have to remember, we had to get all the construction and a lot of it done in June, July, and August, when the school wasn't in session, and they made it happen, and it was really great. These are decisions right now that are going to impact our city for decades, and we need to get this project right, and I think this is the way to do it, and that's why I offered the resolution.
Mr. President.
Councilman Jolly.
Just, just very quickly, it's, the Vice President's absolutely correct in regards to bringing on professionals to do things correctly, right, the first time. We, in the last, I don't know, 15 years or so, we've built two new buildings in the city of Livonia, one of which we used Plant Moran, Crest at that point, which is now Real Point. Being the 16th District Court, that project went amazingly smoothly and functioned from beginning to end with their guidance and their expertise, and we did not have their services for the new DPW building. And although the end result was a great building, it could have been a smoother process and probably a quicker process along the way had we used their services and that. So, learning from those two points of information, I'm absolutely on board in regards to hiring them to guide us in this process as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jolly. Councilman Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. I understand the concerns of spending money. I understand paying PMR this amount of money on the surface can seem a little frustrating, and why would we do that? We have all these city employees. Let them do it. And if we were building one building, sure, but we're not. We're talking about the redevelopment of the five, of the corner of Five Mile and Farmington, and I've had the pleasure of speaking to a number of the representatives from Plant Moran, Real Point, and not only do they have the municipal experience, but they have experience in the marketplace. They deal with developers every single day. The relationships that they have, we just don't have. And not only the relationships that they have are important, but the experience they have. They've built out teams of people in every facet of real estate, and it's important to hire the professionals to get the professional job done. So, yeah, it is a little, you know, there's a lot of conversation amongst the colleagues up here about, do we really want to pay them X amount of dollars? And ultimately, after hearing from representatives from Livonia Public Schools and hearing from our own department heads that have already enough on their plate with the day-to-day operations they already have, having that, that experience, that day-to-day operational control, that owner's representation is very important, and the consultation that they'll be providing is very important. But something that really hit home with me was, they're going to work on savings, because the money that we save, we get back. They're not keeping a percentage of it. They're not keeping X amount of dollars. Whatever money we save, they give back to us, and I think that's very important, because that shows that they're investing with us. They're not just showing up one night to make some money and go on to the next job. They're partnering with us, because they want to see that this corner is redeveloped the right way the first time and something that we can give to the residents and business owners alike. So, I'll be in support of the contract with them, and I hope it passes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavich. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the audience. Any conversation from the audience? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please take the second most awesome vote?
Councilmember Donavich.
Aye.
Councilmember Buzinski.
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik.
Aye.
President McCullough.
Aye.
And the motion carries 7 to 0. We are now, actually, that concludes the regular agenda. We'll look at that. Now, if there's any audience communication for items that are not on the agenda, if you want to make your way up, the floor is yours, if you'd like to speak. Name and address.
Good evening. Ginny Krenz, 34075 Pembroke. You're just talking about your project at Five and Farmington. Todd, going north on Farmington, turning right on Five Mile. That has been bad for a long time. Could you just slap a little patch in there or something?
If you, and I'm not, I'm going to, I'm tabling your time, because you gave your time.
Okay, okay, I'm moving along. Okay, okay, I'm moving along.
Mr. Zelensky is smiling right now, because I think that there's.
I would love to do that, council president, but it's Wayne County's road, and we talked to him last year about it. Hopefully, there's some relief coming, we think, to resurface Farmington Road, so don't, you know, keep your fingers crossed, and hopefully by August, we may see some new activity down there for some resurfacing at that corner for all motorists.
Clock's back on.
Our, our new garbage collector priority is a priority one?
Please.
I've read what they, somebody wrote for Canton, that these new 75-gallon dumpsters are ADA compliant. For somebody my age or older, I don't see where they're ADA compliant, and I'm looking at winter. I don't care if they're on wheels. If the snow is four, six inches deep and it's wet and heavy, dragging that thing to the curb and then back, it's not compliant for me. So if you could take that into consideration when you negotiate your contract.